That's better to go during the week. It don't have, not that there's a big crowd on most sides.
We have a two group tonight, six of us, right, to do that business. And then we have a couple of things to get to, so let's bring the meeting to order. Thanks for your patience, folks. Uh, seven oh eight. Um, so the first order of business, if we could do this, uh, we have minutes to do for March one and March fifteenth. We should get to those, we have two minutes. So thank you for the time, though. Appreciate that. Then we'll get right on to the business. Has everybody had a chance to go over the March one or other minutes? Oh wait, just second, I see which. No problem. All set? So let's go through the March one meeting minutes. So what do we have for edits? Maybe I have a couple of spellings that I see, a couple of notes, but. Do we have some comments, Roger? Craig? Or George?
Um, I have several. Under new business, uh, number one, Eric and Joel Pelletier subdivision amendment. The one, two, third line down, uh, need to provide a Mylar. I would add after that, uh, subdivision plan. So it's clear what Mylar is. Uh, then under number two, uh, again, still new business, Shane and Rosemary, uh, Shifu. Uh, the first line of that, uh, paragraph, board review, the application, and one of the first things I would strike out, they noticed is that, and replace it with discussed was whether, so that it would read, um, review the application, and one of the first things discussed was whether the project could be moved back. And, uh, I would then add, uh, at the end of that, uh, sentence, back, um, from the lake shore. And then, uh, on the second page, under, uh, three, uh, the, uh, Kennebec boat repair. The last bullet, uh, says soft buffer. I'm not quite sure what that should have been, but I, I was thinking it probably should be stormwater runoff management. Cause that was the other subject we discussed. That's it.
I wasn't here.
Okay.
I wasn't here either. I was gonna ask what soft buffer was, but, uh.
I have small, small things on present on the first page, uh, present other. I have here, hell, where's public, uh, again. And then, um, just, I mean, small, but, uh, under new business number two, last line. I think we've got plenty of meeting, plenty of board meetings. And with info, I would recommend changing that information that we would, uh, select and people. And that's all I can.
After what George wanted to add, review back for the lake shore, as per state ordinance?
Oh, I see. You wanna say is per state ordinance or is per, uh, shoreline zoning?
Uh, shore, as per shoreline zoning.
Great. So we have edits. Does the board wish to, to do the, these two things separately or?
I'll, I'll be finished as soon.
Okay. So I didn't obtain a motion, then?
Motion to accept the minutes of March first as amended.
Thanks. Second. Seconded, thank you, Craig. Anyone discussion? Uh, you can't vote, guys, so all in favor? Next, review the minutes from March fifteenth.
So you'll notice, uh, and Nick's made photocopies for everybody, that I had quite a few edits, so, um, what I did was I did a markup and sent it to Nick, uh, thinking it might be easier for all concerning, in particular Nick.
Which is the most important person.
Yeah, right, and I actually have it as, um, you know, in color, if people want it in color. That would be easier.
So on your version, George, um, the, we have board members present in question marks. So we're gonna just rely on the data that Nick has.
Yeah.
That as well as the other. So thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You all set?
I am.
Are we all good?
Yeah.
Everybody had a chance to go through, so comments, edits?
I have two minor comments.
Yeah.
One is, first one's clarification on the, uh, first sentence of the, uh, shoreline zoning discussion. Uh, not the first sentence, but the first paragraph sentence. The wetlands were first, were the first topic of discussion. The, the wetland, this is clarification, the wetlands that I brought in, the wetlands maps were actually DEP generated. And I would suggest that we put, uh, Richard Bra- Baker brought in some DEP generated maps that showed the moderate and high value waterfowl, Whitingbird, wetlands in Belgrade as rated by inland fisheries of the world. George is, is, it's just, it's not perfect as far as.
Yeah, no, I, I, for some reason, thought it, even at the time, that it wasn't from inland fisheries of the world.
And the only other one is about halfway down or two thirds down the paragraph, uh, you gotta get rid of the E and keel. It's about six lines from the bottom.
Only one E?
One E, yeah.
Oh.
I have a website comment that's in the leader. And that's nothing for you, so. If, uh, E, anything, no? George?
Uh, the only one thing I would add is, uh, or, uh, it's the co- what's in the comment box, um, uh, it's a question, um, did we review and approve the minutes of February fifteenth? And if so, that needs to be noted.
Indeed.
If we did.
Could you skip through that? No, yeah, that's, I see, I see. Thank you. And thank you for the reviews. Craig, anything? Roger?
I just had a question on page two of these, uh, things. On the last paragraph, the second sentence in there says, the three things are, then we list things, and I'm counting four. The three things are the legal setback, we have provisions in the village, minimum lot size in the limited commercial district, capital blocks. Am I doing that right?
Yeah, yeah, you are.
That was a, that was a. Yes, good, good point, so. Did you have that, you know, George, George can have those. Thank you, good point. All right. Just being in motion, and thank you very much for the clarification on those points. Motion on the March fifteenth minutes?
Make a motion to approve as amended.
March fifteen. On March fifteen?
Yes.
Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very, very much. Get us that one, let's get, we, that one, we are up to you. I think we're in a good spot. So you'll be presenting? Parrish is not here, so.
He's not.
Okay. Please do.
Yes.
Thank you. They quite hard work today, this, this.
Well, thanks for taking the time. My name again is Bob Martin. I'm here on behalf of, uh, uh, the Marins, but also, uh, this is really a joint request by the Marins and the Franklins. And, uh, I'm here to submit, uh, proposed findings for this planning board to review and if found to be in order, for your signature. And I've previously de- delivered, uh, uh, proposed findings, and they have been reviewed and worked out with the town's attorney, Attorney Hodgson's, and, um, there has been correspondence, I understand, only because I've been copied from an email basis between Attorney Hodgson's and, uh, Mr. Fuller, regarding to confirm that, uh, this language has been reviewed and approved, uh, by the town's attorney. I have, uh, to provide to the, uh, planning board, uh, a revised plan that, uh, K and K surveyors have done. And it's the identical plan that was presented to the planning board, uh, two weeks back. But it now does have, uh, the reference to the Marins reconvenance and the Purnells, uh, reconvenance, uh, stated in this plan. And this would be the proposed plan that would, we would indicate, uh, would be submitted for recording to accompany these findings, so that they, uh, these, this plan is referenced in the findings, so someone looking at the findings could look at the plan and understand, uh, what, uh, is intended to, uh, to be going on, really, with the, 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 the thought process behind the planning board. So Parrish provided me through this copy to, uh, to provide the planning board, uh, and live with you this evening, so.
Is it okay to put it up here?
A- absolutely. This is yours, and, uh, I don't have six of them, but.
One is good, we got to, let's see. Again, in the top of.
Left hand corner of the plan is the, um, making reference to the, um, the recent deed conveyances that, uh, the planning board wanted to have accomplished before we, uh, before we came back. And so if those have been accomplished, the copies of those deeds have been provided to the planning board and, uh, uh, so, uh, I'm here, if you have, if any follow up questions regarding this request or if any, uh, new thoughts have come to the attention of the planning board.
Does anybody have, has everybody had a chance to review the package of information supplied by, by Mr. Martin? Thank you, very thorough job. I'm not an attorney, so I don't know all of these things, but I was, had questions and you were language adjusted, so. That was helpful to me. Everybody had a chance to look this over?
I, I, I have no problem. The town attorney looked at it, approved it.
Okay.
I would defer his judgment on the legal aspect of it.
Indeed, but me as well, so. At this point, are there any other questions for Mr. Martin about what we're going to do? Anybody? No? Okay, so. I have a logistical question. This is the part.
I have a, I have a, uh, a set of findings here that, uh, I could submit for signing and, uh, they are identical to what has been submitted.
Okay.
The only thing I'll tell you is that, um, because the registry to record it requires two inches at the top, I reprinted it, and so the paragraphs don't come out exactly like, like what I submitted to you folks, but it is identical language in all respects.
Okay.
And I have a copy also to submit, uh, to the, to the town. And all I did is readjust the margins at the top because of, uh, the new computer, computerization of the registry. If you don't have two inches, they won't accept it for recording. Yeah.
Spoken it, yes. I was gonna say spoken it as a person, but in a hard way.
So, um, at this point, with the information that's been presented to us, and, uh, we have this map, which I think addressed the concerns in the aspect of water. Um, I'm thinking a, a motion to approve what has been submitted. We then, we then are to approve it. We would then sign the original copy. We would keep this accompanying map?
Yes, that's yours to keep.
With that?
Yes.
Or whatever.
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna, uh, put that in the registry of deeds. We need to just get a photocopy of that tonight.
Yep. True, good point, good clarification, so.
And I, I could certainly, uh, provide the, the town with a recorded copy of these findings.
Actually, that would be even better.
Once it's accomplished, but, um.
Yeah, cause that, that would have the booking page, right? Right, yeah, so that.
And that would be helpful to the town.
Yeah, would be helpful for our records.
So I just kinda wanna talk that out, so we have, I've never done this before. This is first.
Yep.
To do this, that, I think, so.
A non-subdivision.
Right. To take a thing and make it a non-subdivision, to do this, this is my first. So, um, I'm thinking this is the first paragraph I asked you to, so I just wanted to make sure we talked that way. So, does that sound like it makes sense?
Yeah.
Are we all, all good with this? And everybody's had a chance to read this? We've taken about seven minutes so far, by my count. We're hoping to get this done within, within fifteen, maybe under ten, if things go well. Right, so I would entertain a motion at this time.
Guess I would make a motion to approve the findings, um, regarding, um, the, let's see, um, no data on this, um, the, it isn't findings of fact and law now, but, uh, the findings of, uh, regarding the former Franklin subdivision, under the condition that, uh, a recorded copy, uh, be provided to the, um, town.
Okay. I'm good with that. So we have a motion.
Second.
Uh, so for discussion, I just wanted to ask this. Um, on the letter from Mr. Martin to the, uh, Gary and Nick in the town office, uh, it references the division of land owned by Colin and Carol Franklin. I didn't know if that would be an appropriate title for your motion, George. Or land.
That probably would be a, an improvement. So why don't I amend my motion, uh, in that regard? Uh, so, uh, make a motion to approve, um, the draft, the earlier draft had a different title to it, but, um, the findings of fact, I guess, um, regarding the division of land owned by Colin and Carol Franklin, uh, with the condition that, um, the registered, or a copy of the registered, uh, documents be provided to the town.
So there's a motion, second. So thank you for being, being very clear and consistent with this. No need to be too particular, but then again, we need to be. Any other discussion on this matter? No. All those in favor? Thank you.
Great.
I'm glad you all showed up, so we didn't have to scratch off somebody's table for lunch.
Mr. Martin, and, um, is it okay? I just wanna make sure I'm doing this right, or is that all right?
It, it's fine. The last board move, uh, makes no difference.
Okay. Day the nineteenth, why can't I provide?
I have a blue one too, but, uh. There's, I know at, at our office, there's oftentimes banks that require black ink for some reasons, and then there's others who like blue ink because black, you can't tell with black ink whether it's a photocopy anymore because of the, the quality of photocopies now are so good that, uh, uh, times it's difficult to know the difference.
So when I went to get certified rotary, they told us that.
Yeah.
Black ass stains and blue eventually disappears, so make sure everything's nearby.
That's why the bank is.
If that has to be notary, you can understand, right?
Yeah, it's something.
Mine's in the truck.
It does.
It did, I can be notary. And this is the one they put back to you, then?
This goes back to me, and I can record the original, and I'll see that you get, uh, a copy of it.
Thanks, Nick getting the stamp.
Yep. My experience, at least, uh, in the real estate area, is that when you say this is, you have not dealt with this scenario very often, it's, uh, in many instances in the past, when there's been a question regarding subdivision, we might find where there, a code enforcement officer has written a letter to a property owner and made an opinion that a certain set of facts is not a, is not a subdivision issue. Go ahead and do, proceed with your plans. And that's presented to a law office, and you're asked to judge whether or not that should really be the stand for the position of a town, or whether there should be really a further open inquiry, such as a public hearing or, or some type of review by a body. And, uh, we're left oftentimes not knowing, and then, uh, that party proceeds without, without, uh, there being anything on, at the registry of deeds as to whether or not there's been any question or evaluation as to a s- a certain factual situation. So there are many instances where, well, we're familiar, and probably this town is familiar with instances where a code enforcement officer, on his or her own, has made an opinion, and an owner has relied upon it, and off they go, and, and then find out that, that perhaps hadn't been fully thought out, or all the facts hadn't been presented to the code enforcement officer. And, uh, uh, it's, it's been problematic now. In this particular instance, we've got the benefit of parties who have, uh, proceeded in obtaining, for example, a surveyor who can lay out and, 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 and assist a planning board and, you know, identifying specifically what's on, on the ground, and then to come in, uh, and to submit this information. But these findings combined with the plan will at least provide property owners in the future some, some comfort and reliance as far as what the town, uh, the, you know, the extent to which the town has been involved in the thought process, so. Is it, from, from my point of view, dealing with, with property owners, it's, it's extremely helpful to, to know. And, uh, again, I, I feel for you in terms of the amount of time you've taken up to evaluate this, and, but, um, in the end, the hope is, is that this at least is addressed that particular corner of Belgrade for, for a little while, anyway.
Yes, for a while.
And probably, probably forever.
It will outlive us.
If you weren't, if you weren't involved in this project, we would have, we would have said back two months ago, it wasn't a subdivision.
Yeah. Well, that's my prob- yeah. Probably someone would just shoot me for that, but, uh, um, there are tough issues in the, in the subdivision area, which you folks deal with all the time. And I can't, the number of continuing legal education seminars I go to, you would think you would hear every s- every circumstance, but there's always another one, isn't it?
Well, it doesn't help that the legislature changes the law every year.
And, and every few years, they change it, and, and that's a, that's an issue. But, uh, I will, I will be able to get this recorded with a notary, and then I'll see the two folks get a copy of this back. To Nick.
Thank you. He has the copy of, of the map that you provided.
He's got it.
He has, or is it matter?
Got it, and I've got it.
It's our record.
And I'll be able to, uh, provide you with a, a planned booking page, so you could copy that right on yours and know that that one's recorded.
That's great.
Okay?
So at this point, best wishes going forward, it sounds like there's gonna be a lot of stuff happening.
Yeah, yeah, building will start now. Well, no, I still have to communicate with you here. At least he knows who I am, when I come. You're like, oh, here she comes, no. No, but I appreciate you all taking the time and sticking with us through this. It was a confusing start, but hopefully it's very clear now, so I do appreciate it.
So who, who's your, who's your builder?
Um, right now, we're talking to Bob Saint Ash.
Oh, you just tried to send him?
Yeah, we haven't started anything, but, yeah, he's, hopefully ready to, once it's got resolved, so. It was hard to get anyone on board when I said, well, there might be an issue.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Does he?
Yeah, they're like, okay, well, you know, it was very, it would be good, so. Yeah, it was very hard to get someone to say, yeah, you know, give us a start date, and we didn't have one, so. Now we can say we're.
Good. A couple of us live out that way, so we'll, I'm sure.
Yes, well, good, yes. Yes, well, again, thank you very much.
And you will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Game up for you tonight, appreciate it very much.
Yep.
Thanks for that. Okay, thanks, everybody. So we got through that part. Next.
Did you recognize that name?
Was that?
No, maybe you did. I didn't. I just asked him if you recognized the name of the builder.
I was wondering about the name, I don't know that personally.
What's that about recognizing names?
Of the proposed one builder. Of the proposed one builder.
Oh, oh, yeah.
I, did you hear it?
No.
Yeah, I never heard of that guy.
I never heard of him.
New guy moving in town. You know, taking business away from the locals.
There's quite a few Saint Orangees, I don't know that they're contractors, like in Winslow, that's a big Winslow family name.
So it's one of those guys that died together in Belgrade.
Yeah.
Right, watch out. Well said. Um, next is the shoreline zoning ordinance discussion. So we left off some of that. Those four things. Some, those things. Do you remember where we were?
Kettlehole ponds. Or bogs, rather.
I take it that was a recommendation of the comprehensive plan, is that how we got to it?
Yes.
It is correct.
And where we were kinda left off, uh, or at least how I recall us leaving off, Rich had made a comment that it doesn't fit well within the, you know, state law, the underlying state law behind shoreline zoning, and because it's not, they're not great ponds.
Right.
They don't, they're not ten acres, that they're not as green.
They don't fit in you.
Yeah, they don't, they don't fit very well under this ordinance, and, and since then, I, I was thinking about it more, and I, I agree with Rich. It almost seems like something that, you, you know, I personally think they should be protected, uh, um, from development, but, um, the, uh, because they're, you know, pretty, pretty unique, uh, um, plant habitats, and, and, and fairly rare in Maine, in this part of Maine. Um, the, um, but, uh, it almost seems like there's gotta be a, a better tool to do that by, you know, maybe if the town ever, you know, probably glaciers will return before this happens, but, um, the, uh, you know, if the town ever goes ahead with a more comprehensive land use ordinance, that might be a, a better tool than, than this ordinance.
So, having heard that, and others might have some different opinions about this, but am I thinking that if we used a better tool to address the specific and unique qualities of these, of these, I wanna say water bodies, rather than in the shoreline zoning ordinance, that we could, um, pick that other tool, rather than try to force it into this one?
For legal reasons was the only reason I would agree with that.
Okay. Otherwise, the concept of protecting.
Yeah, it's a natural resource, an important natural resource. Resource, uh, uh, shoreline zoning protects important natural resources, but, you know, given how the law, the underlying law is written, and, and, and it, and the parameters of that law, and the limits of that law, I, I don't.
I would tend to agree.
I don't, it seems like it might be on, maybe shaky ground if we.
Right.
Cut too far away from that.
I can't even find a definition of a kettlehole.
Oh, it's not.
No, if, if there ain't one in there, not an existing one in Maine.
Yeah.
Probably defined in, uh, in Natural Resources Protection Act. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
Right.
And then the, the issue, we're talking about kettlehole ponds and bogs, or I'm thinking, would we, if we did, we'd probably be regulating a Stewart Pond, which is not ten acres. Kind of thinking.
Well, I, when I was thinking, I mean, this is just my interpretation of the comprehensive plan, that the intent was to go to protect those kettlehole bogs that, um, are listed with the natural, um,
Areas Program.
Natural Area, Critical Areas Program, which, which, the one across the street here is, the one down twenty-seven off on the right is, and there might be one or two others.
Might be some down on that, uh.
Over towards the Penny Pond.
Well, that's.
Yeah, over there, so, um, the, um, it isn't like they wouldn't have any protection, because, so for example, say somebody wanted to across the street here, you know, put in a big, a new, a, a dollar general returns to Belgrade, uh, hallelujah. The, um, uh, and they really, and they wanna, you know, fill some of that. Well, when they applied to the Commercial Development Review Ordinance, we would have something to say about that because of the, the process that we have under that ordinance, where, you know, they would have to show, um, what important natural resources were being impacted, and we would have to make a finding that it was not damaging to that bog, and.
We have a mechanism.
We would have a mechanism to, um, curtail that activity. That's about the only handle we would have on it, under our current ordinance, is what I can think of, but, I, I did wanna ask you, Rich, though, are those, do you think those are protected, or, or not protected, but, uh, are regulated by the Natural Resources?
I think so.
They are, so there's that.
I mean, for sure, they're regulated as a wetland. You know, there's like tier based on how much you're going to impact the wetland, whether it's a tier one per man, and stuff like that. But they clearly have some regulatory rules over them of some sort, I'm not sure what they are.
Yeah. Anyway, that, that was my thought.
Rich, what do you think?
Well, my, my initial thought, uh, was if we did do something, what would we do? I don't think we would wanna put it. I doubt whether the town will be receptive to a two hundred and fifty foot complete shoreline zone. The only thing I would have thought would be something similar to a string protection district that had a seventy-five foot setback or buffer to it, or whatever, but, uh, you know, as George said, it would, we would have to certainly modify the extent of our ordinance as to what it covers. It's clearly it doesn't cover it now. Doesn't meet any, we'd have to add a kettlehole pond provision.
We need a definition, we need to have a provision there, we'd have to do several things to, to be inclusive in this current ordinance that we don't currently have.
And if we, uh, if we put it in there, we had a two hundred and forty, fifty foot district, we'd have to create a inter, you know, we're under residential resource protection, and, uh, you know, I, I'm not big on trying to add that myself. But if we did, I guess my thought was I, we think we'd just be looking for a seventy-five foot buffer adjacent to them, or something, keep it simple, to speak.
Okay. Zane, Bill, Zane, any, any about what you do?
My thought on the whole thing is that, um, there are other, uh, bodies of water like this in the state, if not in New England. More research has to be done, um, and to do that research, see what's, what the other, gonna get on the internet, check it out.
Okay.
And find out, there, there are regulations out there someplace, and.
Sure.
Rather reinvent the wheel and all that.
Right.
Do that, and, uh, you know, and then the other thing is, you know, we're under, under time constraints here, and we can't really take on a lot of new regulation type of pro- pros, uh, things we're gonna look at. So that, that's my whole thought, is put it off as a special project type of thing, and set up a committee, go look at it, you know.
Okay. Um, you guys have any opinions about this?
From what our discussion tonight about this, my thoughts, I agree with all, we've all stated, and I think it's low risk at this point, um, relative to what could happen to those, those specific entities that we're talking about. I think it's low risk that they'll be impacted, because I think there are other mechanisms in place to help regulate or protect them. So, even though it's, if, if we decide to go forward and not include kettlehole, I'm gonna say kettlehole bog, you know, protection in the shoreline zone ordinance, um, that there'll be other things to, there'll be another mechanism, one or more other mechanisms to properly capture that, not here. That's my thinking.
The majority of them, what, they'd be kicked into some slope district type thing, or is that just for shoreline?
Yeah, just for shoreline.
Yeah, around the state banks.
So, I would, uh, based on that discussion, I would feel comfortable that we, um, basically earmark this for some other ordinance, or some other investigation, or a way to, to do it, whether it's a special committee like Pete talked about, or if we, if the town says, oh, we're gonna do a, uh, you know, this other type of ordinance that we talked about, George.
I mean, that's another recom- that's a, another recommendation of the comprehensive plan.
However it gets captured, not here, but do it in one of those other places, is probably the best fit for the town.
I mean, I don't see it, see it along those lines as ignoring the comprehensive plan, I just see it as what's the best tool to implement that particular temptation.
Right tool for the right job, and that's what we need to do. And Pete, I totally hear you about the time constraints, that I, I get it, so I hear you. So, based on that, how, does everybody feel similarly? I mean, can we agree that we'll handle this with another tool? Okay. So, um, so that was one item, so in previous cases, we've talked about an item, and I think we've made a motion, so we have, as a committee, and I would entertain a motion about this decision, whether or not to regulate kettlehole slash bogs in shoreline zone main ordinance. That's a mofo.
It is, I'm trying to get it out correctly.
Uh, let me try, uh, I would make a motion, uh, that we, at this time, not include kettlehole bogs under shoreline zoning ordinance, uh, due to, um, uh, let's see.
Complexity of the issue.
The, because state law does not apply to it.
So I like that. Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Well done.
The secret weapon of all towns, blame the state.
Hey, we can.
They did it.
We can be more restrictive.
If we so choose, I guess. What's our next topic to discuss?
Uh, let's see.
What shoreline zone?
It's either, it's either the waiver provisions allow for setbacks in the village. No idea. Uh, or the minimal lot size for, like, dual uses in the commercial, limited commercial district. And there is one more after we get done those two discussions, that we should definitely talk about before I go back. Right off draft, the final version, or the draft version. Nothing's final till it's final.
Kettlehole bog, the.
There's a, well, just.
Did you talk yet about the illegal setback waivers?
No, that's the one in the village, where there's a provision in here somewhere that allows for us to, uh, establish a setback, allow a setback, uh, for development between two lots based on the, uh, setback of the neighboring lots. So if somebody's at fifty feet, and somebody's at twenty feet, we could allow a setback of forty-five feet for a development in between.
In that district, that zone only.
It's just that one area down in the village, I think, I, I need to find where that is, but. That was, that was an issue back a couple of years ago.
With, uh, Mrs. Johnson's, uh, application.
Yeah, that's right.
And at the time, my recollection is that, we had gotten advice that that provision's illegal.
Yes.
Planning Board does not have any authority to be issuing waivers.
Right.
Under shoreline zoning.
So we don't, we don't have that authority to do that?
We don't have the authority, but there's language in here that makes it sound like we do.
So we'd have to pay it.
We would have to strike it.
We'd have to strike it, so that, is that what we should be doing?
That's my thought.
Exactly, that's my recommendation, as we're doing it, if it's illegal to do so, and right that many, in my mind, down along the village, like, looking at long pond, you guys may be better at that than I am at knowing the distances, but there's only that little stretch between the, I mean, obviously, all those cottages on the other side of, of the stream are close. But I don't see that we want to be, they're already established and everything. The only other place, uh, to look at the south side of the stream, uh, going down toward Days and Johnsons or whatever, it seems to me that, once you get down there a few hundred feet, the structures must be back. I'm thinking when you get down, as, certainly as far as the hotel, or whatever that, that place is, I'm, I don't think we ought to be establishing, uh, setbacks that, I mean, it just seems like it's a little small area where that would apply. And if it's illegal to do so, let's use the standard procedure all along it.
Did you think the language is on page thirty-seven?
It's probably under setbacks.
Yes.
Principle and accessory structures, uh, under B one, the la- last couple of lines here.
I think it starts there, George, and I had highlighted some things, and, and made some notes, and said, this is in contrast with, uh, on page thirty-eight, that's in contrast with what I found on page forty-one, number seven. So this has to do with, well, that's standings, but it is also talking about, uh, thirty-seven. Oh, yeah, that's exactly, B one.
What's that, B one?
I believe so.
On page?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. The last half of that.
That was the last four lines.
Yes, 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 yes.
That's it. I believe. Because where it says twenty-five feet, and in the limited commercial district, the one hundred foot setback may be waived by the planning board. And that's not accurate.
So, we're saying that we, we ought to strike that part, just put a sen- just end the sentence, uh, one hundred foot setback, period. And then the rest of the sentence, take it, you know, just, take it out, right?
Put a period after twenty-five feet.
Yeah. Twenty-five feet? No, hundred feet.
What's that? No, well, yeah, and then.
Well, shall be at least twenty-five feet.
Yeah, that's.
And, in the limited commercial district.
That's the, that's where it starts, the, the language about wa- waving it. So if we get rid of that language, we don't have that waiver in there.
Oh. Okay, so you're saying that in the twenty-five feet, period?
Uh, period, and then eliminate the rest of the sentence, and leave the next sentence where it starts in the Resource Protection District.
Yeah.
Setback shall be two hundred and fifty feet.
Okay. Which is on the next page, right?
Yes, yeah. So, I think if we just put the period after twenty-five feet and eliminate the rest of the sentence, we've got that taken out.
So let's tell Nickly it's back. So if that were the case, in the future, it would read, let's see, uh, starting up a couple lines there, uh, and seventy-five feet from the normal high water line, two water bodies, tri- of other water bodies, tributary streams, or the uplifted edge of the wetland, except that, in the general development district, setback from the normal high water line shall be at least twenty-five feet, period.
Yeah.
Then, the next sentence would begin, in the Resource Protection District, setback requirement shall be two hundred and fifty feet, blah, blah, blah. Are we good with that?
Yeah.
So Nick, we are on page thirty-seven of the shoreline zoning ordinance. What was recommended. What was recommended is that we edit this to to strike, what, what period in, after the, uh, number twenty-five, uh, twenty-five feet? And strike the remainder of that sentence? So, the paragraph would then, um, continue reading, the next sentence would say, in the resource protection district, the setback requirement shall be two hundred and fifty feet. In doing so, we take away what, what, the way it's written appears to give the, the planning board authority which it does not have to do that, have the authority to grant waivers. Okay, so.
So, we don't have an authority to grant a waiver, waiver this in shoreline zoning, or, um, I thought something like the Dollar General, they were looking for us to grant waivers.
Yeah, it's in, in zoning ordinances in general and shoreline zoning in particular. The course of development review ordinance is not a zoning ordinance.
And that's a good distinction, actually. And, and actually, they asked, did they ask for variance?
That, that too. I mean, they asked for like eight waivers, at least eight waivers, maybe ten. And then they asked for variance to the minimum lot size requirements.
So, we're trying, I'm just trying to answer the question, including the law. The example had a whole bunch of including things, um, that one with the Dollar General. So, waiver, we can't do that.
In shoreline zoning, and we don't have zones on, on shoreline.
Is it, this, right?
So, so if someone wanted, you know, to get a waiver, they'd have to go to, to the appeals board to do it.
Right.
That's exactly my.
And that would be a variance.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
That's where it's appropriately done.
I read that somewhere, appeals board doesn't give you these, or, yeah.
And they can still do that.
Right, yeah.
Good, good luck.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do it.
So, does that make sense then? We strike that language so that makes it clear, I think clearer, and takes away any difficulty.
Good.
Um, let's see. So, that should cover, then, the item which was, yeah, the illegal setback waivers provision in the village.
Now, Peter, when you start, when we start discussing that, you mentioned page forty-one. You said you talked about that a lot.
Yeah, I don't mean to get us off track, but I had written down in my copy, on page thirty-eight, paragraph C two, it's not, this is slightly different topic, but it seemed to have, um, lack of clarity or exact contrast, actually. We're talking about principal or accessory structures and expansions of existing structures. It says, shall not exceed thirty-five feet in height or one half foot per one foot of setback from a public, private, own road or right-of-way using covered letters. I had that in contrast with, I could be going on some rabbit hole here, on page forty-one, paragraph seven, new principal or accessory structures and expansions of existing principles or accessory structures shall be located within the non-shorefront boundaries of the lot such that no portion of any structure is closer than ten feet to any boundary, non-shorefront boundary lot. In addition, no structure shall be constructed to or expanded closer than twenty-five feet to the near limit of the right-of-way of the road. So, I guess my question was, which is it?
It's funny you should mention that, Peter, 'cause, uh, I have a same note, I have a note, margin conflict with paragraph seven on page forty-one.
Really, okay.
So, I, I'm guessing we talked about that at one point.
And, and I, you know when it comes to mine? Yeah, I could, I get, could be wrong. Does anybody remember Pine Beach Road, we've had at least one application for, when you go down that road and then it, it hangs up and it left. There's been at least one application down there where a garage was being proposed to be built and it was near the road and we talked about setback from the road, because that's, if I would be correct, and that is the non-shorefront boundary of the lot and it's going back to the road, not the shorefront, and it was getting closer to the road and we're talking about height of it. And I think we had confusion about that.
Yeah, we did.
Pete, does that ring a bell?
Yeah.
It, it rings a bell with me. I couldn't tell you where in town it was, but, um, but I recall that being an issue.
So, again, I don't know if we're gonna stop it tonight, but this is one place where I thought, geez, I'm broke, if we, if we.
I, I think when we get into that, we're gonna bring in Dick Born. And, and as he was, he knows all, he, he knows a lot of history on it and on this point. So, I, I talked to him, maybe about a year ago, about down, like, down, down, talking about it. And he, he could, he'd be willing to talk about it, if we ever get around to it. And, uh, he'd be a good resource. Because he was back, he was chairman of the planning board at the time, and sort of thought process, and he was a little bit confused at why he went in and this and that. So, I think that, I think it'd be done.
A lot of this language is been put in in an era where Dick was there, but that wasn't in the state guidelines or anything, these areas here. I didn't know whether, uh, the height one, I, I'm reading it, I'm not sure two, two is a, this, uh, conflicts with that other one, because one is talking about height, the other one's talking about boundary setbacks. So, I think you can have two formulas, uh, and not be conflicting if we're talking about two different things.
Okay.
One is setback, next one, but I, I'm wondering whether, uh, I don't know if anybody knows on the fire department, but I was thinking some of our setback issues from public right-of-ways and whatever, and height limitations had to do with limitations with the fire department or something like that.
You're right.
But Dick may know that.
Dick does know that, and he, he kind of did. He says, he, he thought that it needed to be revisited because he thought the idea of, you know, when a building comes down, uh, it didn't fall, uh, you know, in a right angle all the way out. Let's say it's thirty feet high, for example, it doesn't fall thirty feet off that way, it kind of collapses, you know, more closer than less than thirty feet, might come down within fifteen feet or ten feet. So, he, he, that's, he knows a lot about that, so he needs to, that's what I'm saying. And I, I don't know that much about firefighting stuff, so, I think we don't either, so he has a lot of insight into it, so, you know.
Okay. Well, does, I, I don't know how the board feels, but you wish that we try to invite Mr. Born in for, like, the second meeting in May, see if we can get clarity on this one?
Let me ask you a question first. Um, are we still intending to have a public informational, a public informational meeting so that we could get input from people like Dick or anybody, people that we don't know of?
Yeah, I think so, yes. The answer is yes.
Because once we get to the public hearing, it's all over but the crying.
Right.
You can't make changes at that point.
Right, at the hearing. So, if you had a public, um, informational session.
Then we can make changes.
Yeah.
Reflect what input we get from the public.
Okay.
Well, yeah, you could do it that way, but I think this, if you, you, you may as well address it right now, right up front, before we go to the public hearing. So, we, we better understand it.
Okay.
You know.
I, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I, I would say that, uh, if we did invite Dick two weeks from now or whatever, uh, that doesn't mean we can't proceed. And I'm thinking we, in terms of, George one time suggested that he would serve as the typist, if you will. Uh, because I don't know how to strike, delete, and whatever, so that somebody reading it afterward would know what I changed. But I don't think that, I'll put it this way, that's not gonna stop us from beginning the rewrite based on what we've already decided.
Right.
And then, speaking to Dick, and if we got some more to change, we can do that afterward. There's plenty to do in the next two weeks.
Yeah.
To incorporate what we've already decided. So, I, I'm not opposed to trying to find out why these things are, are there. Rather just skip over them.
All right. I'm, I'm good with that. Is the board bill okay with that? So, let's make some progress then. Meanwhile, maybe we can by the end of the night, we can come up with a plan to invite Dick, um, to an upcoming meeting. To, and I'm also trying to think of our schedules too, you know, it's gonna be end of May, this is gonna be end of June, end of July. I wanna make sure we have our public hearings concluded after a public information session that would allow us to then be finalized, so we can put, you know, the, the print and then have it all ready for voting. Before you know it, it's gonna be September.
Yeah.
I, I'm not trying to say, we have the nice air, but that's the way it is.
Yeah, no, that's just the way it goes.
So, so let's keep that in mind, okay? So, looking at this, and, um, we talked about the illegal setback waivers, we talked about the kettle hole bogs, and then, we have not yet talked about minimum lot size in the limited commercial district.
Do we, do we need to vote on the waiver thing?
Oh. Do we, did we vote on the kettle hole bogs one, right? We, we do need to vote on the, um.
Uh, that one's pretty good, committee, maybe judge.
Yeah, uh, secretary. Yes, we do, we do need to vote on it. So, I would entertain, entertain a motion on the discussion concerning, this would be the setback waivers provision in the village.
I just got, you're, 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 I'm just checking to make sure somebody can lock the door.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I just didn't want to get a phone call.
Yeah, right in good hands.
So, so I would entertain a motion if someone's willing to do so relative to that topic.
Um, can't wait anybody else speaking up. Um,
Yeah.
Make a motion to, um, eliminate the waiver, um, for setbacks, um, for principal and accessory structures in the general development district.
Okay. Should we put down one bit and then that's not needed right there? I was wondering, something like that, too, Roger, you should reference section fifteen, nature standards, B one? This is where the language is changing.
Yep, so, uh, I make a motion that we, uh, eliminate the, um, setback waiver and the limited, oh, I'm sorry, uh, in the limited commercial district, uh, for principal and accessory structures in section fifteen, uh, B, B one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second, second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Perfect. So, okay, so those are two things now. Um, next was the minimum lot size in the limited commercial district. Actually, there are only three things. earlier I thought there were four, but it is the, I think it is. So, uh, something I thought we'd call it.
So, fourth, I would suggest we don't have a fourth one, that we talk about appeals section. Uh, it won't take all that long.
Okay. I'm good with that. So, the minimum lot size in the limited commercial district, so where was that?
Limited commercial district.
This has to do with, uh, your house, uh, whatever. Right, I was sorry.
What, what is limited commercial district for?
The village, this is what.
I, I thought the village was, uh, general development.
Nope.
Nope.
Um, it's the spin-off that we identified from, um, Brightside Marina.
Correct.
But, I wasn't at that meeting. Was that last week?
No, this was whenever you first came in.
Yeah, like a month ago.
Yeah.
But, so, where, so where is general development?
Hammond lumber.
That's it?
It's, it's general development.
General development. What about Tootsie's lumber up there, that one?
Not shoreline zone.
Okay, right. Like, so, so the village is limited commercial.
Right.
For sure. And that's shown on the map, right?
Yeah.
Well, you get it, Pete? No, that's right.
It is, it's shown on the map, although the, the, the map we have is kind of faded, it's hard to tell.
So, so the whole, all the whole, so there's no general development at all, at all, down there in the village, so it's all limited commercial.
Right.
All right. We'll get that clarified.
If it were general development.
I mean, it's not a really appropriate place to have industrial.
Yeah.
Uses.
Okay. All right. So, so that was my question. I was, I wasn't sure of what we're talking about.
Okay.
And the issue, Peter, is the, like, Brightside Marina wanted to, there's already a house there. The lot is, I'm not even sure it's conforming for an existing house. And Brightside came in to put a marina, or similar to a marina anyway, on that same piece of property. And there's a provision in the ordinance says you have to meet the lot size for each use, not, uh, combination of uses or whatever. So, we denied that project because it didn't have enough land for a marina, which requires a certain amount of lot area, and a residence, which requires a certain amount of lot.
Well, and, and at the time, what caught my attention, wasn't even that so much, was the fact that Gary spoke up and said that, uh, the standards that are on page thirty-six, uh, the minimum lot size standards are more, are bigger, more stringent, in other words, than what's in the minimum lot size ordinance. Now, I haven't done a side-by-side comparison, but that's what Gary said.
It's thirty thousand square feet in the, for a commercial use. Uh, not thirty, uh, because it's forty thousand square feet in a residential, uh.
Residential's forty, uh, commercial's sixty.
Okay, yeah. So, in that case of Brightside, to be a legal lot, they would have sixty plus fourteen.
Right, right. But, uh, just, the square footage, Gary said, I'm just repeating what Gary said, I, again, I, I haven't looked into this. Uh, I haven't gone through the minimum lot size ordinance and done a side-by-side, but what Gary said, when we were reviewing Brightside Marina, was that, um, that those, the sixty thousand square feet for a commercial and the forty thousand square feet, actually, the forty thousand square feet, that's the same as in the minimum lot size ordinance, isn't it? Anyway, he was saying those numbers are larger. Now, of course, the minimum lot size ordinance has no shorefrontage standard, because it, it isn't specific to, um, uh, water bodies, but, um.
Were you saying that the minimum lot size ordinance is greater requirements, or the shoreline zoning?
Shoreline zoning, that's what Gary said.
Okay. It may be. Uh, our reaction at DEP kind of was, this is the shoreline area, and, and, let me say this. My feeling is that the shoreline area having larger commercial lot sizes than the townwide standard or general standard is not really a conflict, it's conflicting, but there's a rationale for it, because the waters are
Yeah.
more susceptible or whatever than the commercial areas.
Well, agreed. Pete, actually, you were at the meeting that, where this came up initially, not when we took it up again, because you made, what I thought, a, a good point, is of, uh, when we were reviewing Brightside Marina, of, isn't this an area where we want economic development? Isn't this where we should be encouraging businesses to locate of this type? And, uh, or something to that. And, uh, or something to that effect.
Right, I remember, I remember bringing that up.
And, and so, that's what resonated with me, um, um. If in fact Gary was correct, that the lot size requirements in the limited commercial district were more stringent than what was in the minimum. No, I'm not speaking about the short frontage. You know, maybe, I, I'm not sure that anything needs to be done with that, um, but, um.
You know, what I was.
I don't know, that, that was, that's what I took away from that meeting.
You know, I was thinking, and, you know, I'll bring it, let me bring it up now, you know, we're not in the, the application thing, but, you know, going forward, um, uh, in, in the village, uh, you gotta say to yourself, you know, you want some businesses to come in there, well, you gotta make that assumption for economic development. You got businesses that, it's a mixture, business and residence.
Yep.
And, 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 how are you going to bring in new businesses or make changes to the businesses if, um, you have, um, laws that won't allow you to make a natural type of business go there? For example, you know, what, what he's doing down there fits in with waterfront boating, you know? It's not like he's coming in with, uh, you know, mining, stuff like that. So, you know, at times, you see, from a commercial development perspective, you got, a business wants to come into, into a particular town, okay, look for a tip, alright, tax incentive, right? And, and you wanna have, you wanna be able to, uh, blend in your, your regulations so it makes, so they all kinda fit into the kinda business you wanna bring in. So, you gotta, how, how you gonna attract businesses? If you have ordinance, if you have ordinances that don't allow you to do a lot of stuff that fits in with the waterfront. That's what I'm saying, you know? Basically, the guy wanted, wants to do the ring of dock space, alright? And, you know, docks bring in business to, to the, to the other businesses within that area, you know? Customers and, and food, this and that, so, somehow or another, can we, going forward, can we keep this in mind? You know, that's, that's, that's what I'm kinda.
Does anybody have the minimum lot size ordinance, uh, on them?
I do.
And, are these lot, lot sizes, is, is Gary correct? The, these are larger than the min, what's in the minimum lot size ordinance?
I was trying to do a little comparison in, um, so we could talk about it. So.
Cause that's what, I mean, Rich is right, you know, this is in the shoreline zone, so there's, there, there are differences, but, um, but, um, it would be good to know whether Gary was correct and isn't.
Yep, so, looking at the, uh, minimum lot size ordinance, on page eight, it talks about residential use. It says, have a lot area of at least forty thousand square feet.
Yeah, that's the same as here.
Right, so for size, that, that matches.
That's for residential or commercial?
Uh, I was reading the residential one.
So what's commercial?
Uh, I don't know, I'm reading, uh, I, I, I give the, uh, the, the, it says the, which one? Sixty inch, ten. Okay, commercial, right, right, sixty thousand square feet.
Okay, so the chapter one thousand here has a forty thousand square feet with two hundred feet of short frontage.
And if it's commercial, it's three hundred feet of short frontage.
Not in the chapter one thousand, no. Is that what this is called? I think sixteen.
So is this what, what Gary was talking about then?
Maybe that's what he would, maybe I misunderstood. I thought he was talking about the town's minimum lot size ordinance. I mean, that would be very weird though, because then we would have a smaller lot, allowed lot size in the shoreline zone than we would else inland in town.
I wonder if that was the plan.
Uh, one thing, uh, Craig, that forty thousand and two hundred, I think, that we were reading for the, uh, within the shoreline zone for commercial.
Oh.
You gotta turn the page, that's adjacent to title.
Commercial fisheries.
Well, that's adjacent to tidal waters. Uh, for non-tidal waters, it's. Sixty and thirty.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the same as the, um, state minimum.
And so it was for commercial, so we said residential, commercial, and then the other one was.
Those numbers didn't change from when DEP came up with, they revised, uh, chapter one thousand. Uh, those, the numbers are in the revised one are the same as they were before that.
So, in our minimum lot size ordinance, individual private campsite says have a lot area of at least thirty thousand square feet. And in ours, we say thirty thousand. Oh, it references C section fifteen. So, are we seeing any conflict yet?
No, not, not with the state guidelines.
Okay, so, and we can't make it any less, any more, any more lax. So, I think we just stick with what we have.
I think so, but, I, I do.
Now, when I, at the, the, the planning board meeting, one time I said that, uh, generally you can't make it more relaxed, but if you had a good reason, that you can convince DEP it makes sense. Uh, we have accepted standards that aren't the same as the guidelines or less restrictive. I was, when I came in tonight, I'm thinking, well, what, I mean, what kind of things could we do if, if the board was, wanted to, you know, create an out here or some kinda, and it seemed to me that if we tied it to some kind of, uh, water-dependent use.
Commercial use.
Yeah, water-dependent commercial use, uh, where we allow the second use provided that, uh, you know, you had a certain amount of frontage or lot area. But to just allow any kind of commercial use, uh, and have two uses on the same thing. I think we, we'd be happy to, we'd have to tie it to, this is the lakes area, the stream and stuff that, you know, we, we want to allow some, as Peter said, you know, maybe some marinas or docks or whatever, and, uh, you know, here you gotta, water-dependent use, it might take something like that, but.
I mean, the reality is, that passageway has some severe natural limitations. And including on his business, he can, they can only take their docks out so far based on state law.
But the other thing.
And maintain the, um, the, uh, navigation, uh, you know, really, you're not even, we're not even really talking, in reality, talking about that passageway, we're really talking about the shore. In terms of potential for economic development, we're really talking about the Long Pond Shore.
I think we could only really, if we were gonna do anything, I think we'd have to limit it to the limited commercial district.
Right, yeah.
There's no way, I think, that DEP would accept two uses, a commercial and a residential, or two commercials anywhere on Long Pond or Great Pond, so.
Yeah.
We're talking about the village.
Right, exactly.
Uh, and I know that, I don't know, was that Board of Appeals meeting last night, but for Brightside?
Uh, I didn't.
They had a meeting, I think.
They did, maybe it was just about minutes.
Oh.
And new orders there.
Okay, cause I'm not sure what, you know, it's kinda like, yeah, we kinda feel sorry, if you will, for Brightside, or maybe we don't, but, uh, maybe we do. Uh, the issue of, well, they can't do what they've been doing, or supposedly, uh, for the last couple of years. And we may say, well, geez, you know, we really think that we oughta have allow marinas in that stretch there, but, you know, that may not be the best place to encourage a whole lot of additional boat traffic, even though they're maybe going to days and stuff. But, uh, what do the people who live along that shoreline think? Do they want us to additional boat traffic? I don't know.
Well, and, and whether it's, and, like I said, that marina, that locate, that location for a marina isn't ideal, first off, because of the limitations of the navigational. The same's true for the amount of boat traffic and the amount of docks that, um, the village inn can have. Um, you know, so, there's just some natural, nothing that has nothing to do with ordinances or regulations that has to do with the water body itself. Uh, the, uh, uh, the, uh, you know, I, it, for me, it doesn't matter whether I feel bad for him or, or as an applicant or not, it's more about, for me, it was when Gary said that these standards were more stringent than what was in the minimum lot size ordinance, or that was my understanding. Or for that matter, you know, it would, they were more stringent than what is in the minimum, uh, statewide standards. Well, that's, neither of those is the case, that's an inaccurate statement. Um, and, um, so I, I don't, I don't see where we got a lot of footing here, uh, unless we try to make the argument that you had suggested.
Well, yeah, and I'm not arguing that, I'm just bringing it out that that, it seemed to me that if the board wanted to do anything at all, it's gotta tie this thing to water dependency.
Yeah, cause we have to get DEP and the commissioner of DEP's approval of our ordinance change.
And we, you know, from our perspective too, you know, I'm talking about water dependency. You know, do you, do you create a, a change in the ordinance that would allow for, instead of a marina there, some other kinda commercial thing that doesn't fit?
Yeah, I mean, so, let's say somebody proposed the bed, bed and breakfast on that site. That wouldn't be a water-dependent use.
No.
So, it wouldn't even benefit most other businesses. You know, it would be very, it would be very, very narrow, it would basically be marinas and, I don't know what else, water parks.
Well, the thing is, there's always been a marina down, the history of Downey Lakes, I've always had a marina down the last stream.
Yeah.
And I've lived there for over, probably twelve years now. And I have not heard one complaint from any resident along that stream, they all actually kinda like it, because they enjoy looking out at it. They enjoy looking at the boat traffic the way it used to be.
Puts their beer to the guy that's going by.
And, uh, so, all those faults on that, I mean, I've never heard a complaint about those docks being in there.
Right.
So, not from any of those residents, and that goes up around the shore, up around the corner, I'm talking, because I know all of them. And they're all kinda saying, well, why can't he do that? So, it's not opposed to by those local residents. They all like to look at it, they like to go down there for the Fourth of July Boat Parade, like, so enable it down, to come down. They all like looking at the boats out there, um. So it's not an opposed by the local residents down there, it's opposed by people that don't even go down the street.
It's an ideal location protected from wind and weather.
Yeah, it's ideal, completely ideal, and quite frankly, Great Pond needs another marina. Long Pond could use one.
Yeah, oh yeah, I'd love to see one more on.
And whether it be restricted for the gas, that's no problem, that's no problem in there. You know, I look, I like, like, you know, in the comprehensive plan, as you know, George, there's a focus on the village, you know? That's, you know, you do business there, that's where, you know, according to that, you know, approved highway there, you know, state highway and course down Hammond and then up for, you know, uh, where I live, you know? So, I think we gotta keep that in mind and, 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 and.
Absolutely.
I don't, I don't mean to sound redundant, but, you know, we can po, consider the, the business aspect of it.
Well, I, I don't disagree with that at all, cause I don't disagree with the comprehensive plan, um, the, uh, it's just in this particular instance, what are we gonna do? We're, we got our hands tied.
We do. Right, right, and I'm not advocating right now to change it, you know, you know, going forward, somehow or another, you know, we could put some language in there, in, in this North End plan, that it's, you know, if it's water-dependent, maybe there's some room for, um, allowing a, a business to go in there, it's, fits in with, you know, what's going on with the, you know, in, in the, in the area.
Well, what Rich is saying, we could do that now. Maybe you'd wanna put something together, uh, put pen to paper, uh, we, we just need a really good, solid justification and, and, uh, to pass, you know, cause we are gonna have to convince DEP to approve it as being less restrictive than the, uh, chapter one thousand.
So when you talk about time constraint, this is one that would probably go against that argument. Cause we are constrained by time, but this would mean coming up with basically developing a case that you can present to DEP, get the, the structure within that to find time, review this case, approve the case, and then get back to us.
Now, does that have to start with us, or does Brightside have to bring it to us, and then we bring it up?
No, it's us.
It's us, yep, totally. I, I can't do it, I can tell you that, I, I can't get off the case.
Right, alright, well, you know, we could, you know, outside of the, you know, it'd have to be put together prior, after this, um, getting this, uh, shoreline zoning, uh, revision done. We're gonna have to do it after the fact. I don't have the time to put it together, I'll, I can help, and, and I can recruit some people to help me out doing it. You know, if anyone in the board wants to do it, fine, we can do it. But as far as time goes, it'll take, it's gonna take a while for the, for the case to get, so it's, it's, we can, we can approach it that way.
Sure.
You know?
I'm open to that. I just have one more question about this particular topic, because on the land, you mentioned standards area, you talked about residential, commercial, and campsite values that were found there. I wanted to know about public and private recreational facilities. So, in ours, it shows forty thousand square feet and two hundred, uh, sort of short frontage, I don't know where in the minimum lot size that addresses.
It's the same.
So is that the same as residential?
Uh, it's the same, uh, same, I'm sorry, uh, wait a minute.
What, what covers it in, I guess I'm trying to ask, what, what in the minimum lot size ordinance addresses the thing called?
Oh, oh, in the minimum lot size, I'm sorry.
What page are you reading? Oh, so in the shoreline zoning ordinance, it's on page thirty-six, section fifteen, and it's in C. I'm trying to compare what is in the minimum lot size to address that particular topic called public and private recreational facility. All I'm trying to do is find out if there's conflict, so.
Does Brightside have two hundred feet?
They have two hundred, yes, but they have three hundred, which is quite.
The only thing I could add is that, going back to chapter one thousand, it's the same.
Okay, then, then that's all I'm actually, I'm, I'm, yeah, right. I just wanna make sure we're not introducing conflict, more inconsistency.
So, just from my own, just so I can learn, public and private recreational facility, what falls underneath that?
It's actually defined in here, it's a, a place designed and equipped for the con, conduct of sports, leisure time activities, and other customary and usual recreational activities excluding boat watching facilities.
So, what's a good example?
Park, maybe, uh, swimming area, a public beach or whatever, that type of thing.
Okay.
Uh, could be a baseball field.
Sure.
I'm not, too many people are gonna, uh, Unity did, I guess, but, uh, how many people are gonna donate, uh, shoreline property for putting in a ballpark?
Child's camp.
Yeah, true, good point, that's a good example.
So, so if Brightside puts a little recreational facility on their shore, could they get seats? So, so if Brightside puts a little recreational facility on their shore, could they get C instead of B?
Just couldn't use it as a marina.
Right.
Oh, what if they closed their boat launch? Yeah, that's not gonna work.
Couldn't get them very far, does it?
So that's the way it is.
Yeah, unless they use the put-in over at the public landing for all of their boat launches. Just use the docks for storage.
And not charged for it.
Oh.
Not much of a business, is it?
Change the business.
Oh, because it's pub-.
Yeah, it's commercial. Right, right.
So, cuz what we're doing tonight so far is to, is to look at things that we had identified that we needed to address that were remaining in the shoreline zoning ordinance. And um we've gone over several, several things. One of, the last one that we were just discussing was the minimum lot size in the limited commercial district. Part, that's what we just discussed. So have we come to the conclusion that what we have in our current shoreline zoning ordinance is not in conflict with chapter one thousand? Do we need to hash this out anymore? I entertain a motion then relative to this topic, so we can move on. Craig, you want to give us that?
I'll make a motion now. We keep our minimum lot standards the same as they are. As they are the same as the commercial, uh chapter one thousand.
If I could have mentioned that, it's found in section fifteen A. So we have a motion?
A second.
Any more discussion? All those in town? Craig, good job. So based on the minutes, we've gone, we've gone through the items that we had identified that we needed to still tackle. Okay, um one was the, the legal setback waivers provision in the village, the minimum lot size in the limited commercial district. Okay, so having said that, looking back at this one thing, where are?
Can I suggest we talk about one more thing?
Actually, and I have one wordsmithing thing, but it's major enough that I think it's worth us all talking about.
Sure, do, should we do Rich's and then?
Absolutely.
Rich, another thing?
Uh can we go to our own ordinance, uh page seventy? Paragraph G one A, which deals with appeals.
Second. G one A, yep.
And if you have a copy of the, of the existing chapter one thousand, you would go to page fifty seven. And it's the first paragraph.
Well, I guess when you talk about the rig, all the shoreline zoning ordinance we have now, right?
The one we have now, go to page seventy.
That, yeah, page seventy, okay.
And it's the paragraph G one A.
Yeah, you're talking about going, where now, oh, the update.
Uh, yeah, the, the chapter one thousand, the DEP, you go down, we went a couple of years ago, several years ago. We would want to go to page fifty seven. I don't know how many people have.
I don't have one. Go ahead.
Do you?
Probably goes over here.
Okay, it, it has to do with what kind of, what kind of appeal is presented uh to the Board of Appeals. There are two kinds of administrative appeals. One of them is what they call de novo appeal, which means you start from the beginning. If the planning board denied a particular application, de novo means they, it goes to the board, when it go- appeal to the Board of Appeals, where the Board of Appeals doesn't just look at the information and the reason that the planning board denied the project. They would, they would start from scratch, just like we would at a planning board meeting. Uh so that's kind of de novos, where there, there, the appeal goes to them and they listen to the applicant and they go through the whole thing again. There's a, another kind of appeal, which is an appellate hearing, of which the Board of Appeals would only review the reason the application was denied. They would look at whether the planning board decision uh made was proper. Not look, not start from scratch again. And our ordinance right now says that all administrative appeals are based on, are on a de novo basis. So this would send all of our P, our denials to the Board of Appeals. And they would essentially start the meeting out, just like we did. They'd start off trying to figure out what all the information is and whatever.
Basically, they would review the application right from the get-go.
Yeah.
Create its own record and everything.
And the Board of Appeals, I think generally, is not as up on the content of the shoreline zoning ordinance as uh the planning board members who deal with it all the time. The current state guidelines with a changed one, ours, ours sends everything as a, an a de novo
Basis.
application to the Board of Appeals. The changed state guidelines essentially says if it comes from the, if it's a denial of a code enforcement officer decision, uh then yes, they do it as, just like starting over again. And the reason that I know we, I was there when we put that in there, is a code officer really doesn't provide a record review or anything like that. So it may make sense to go back and start from scratch. But the planning board, um in the case of more knowledge and more of a record is created, it make, I think it makes sense for appeals from the planning board to do as in the DEP guidelines, where they just review, like to say the Brightside case, where our rationale was you uh have to have double the amount of frontage and lot area or whatever. You have to have an amount for each use, the marina and the thing, and we cite where it's coming from. And they literally need to go and see whether we made a mistake in, in coming to that conclusion. Uh they don't have to go back and review the whole application and start from scratch. Uh I, my suggestion is that we uh adopt DEP guidelines on that section as well.
Sort of independent of Rich, um after our denial of shoreline zoning application from Brightside Marine because of the inability to meet the, you know, lot size requirements. Uh I had talked to my wife about this um a little bit cuz I was just curious how it'd go cuz I didn't know. And and she, she sort of educated me on the difference between appellate and de novo appeals and um and uh just for, you know, consideration is, she said, a lot of towns are switching from de novo to appellate for a couple of reasons. One, they think it's inefficient cuz consequently you have an appeals board basically starting all over again, redundant. In smaller towns, it's a problem, as Rich mentioned, where not unlike Belgrade, our ports of appeals barely ever had, has to meet. Um much less on shoreline zoning, so um they don't have, they don't have the background and the experience that the planning board does. Some towns, some larger cities routinely don't do de novo anyway. And I think that's, I don't know, administrative kind of considerations. Um the uh, and I guess she's been involved in cases where applicants get really pissed off when they have to start all over again. Now, I would think some applicants might like that second bite of the apple. Um but um but apparently there, some cases they don't. So that kind of cuts both ways probably, depending on the circumstances of an individual case. The uh, uh the other thing too is, I was thinking of, it, it, so the appeals board then, under de novo, holds a public hearing. This is a plus or minus kind of thing, depending on your perspective. Um the um, on the shoreline zoning, we don't require any notice to abutters or any member of the public when somebody files an application with us. So depending on your perspective of the abutter versus, or the applicant, some of the newer information that the appeals board might get is from those abutters that did not participate in this process before us because we don't require a, any kind of a public hearing or uh on a routine basis or any public note, any notice other than the public notice of the meeting in, in general and the publication of our agenda. So, I don't know, that.
So I have a question. If we drop the guidelines, uh language from the chapter one thousand guidelines that we talked about, Rich? And um would that, would that permit or allow the Board of Appeals to have an appellate hearing? But then if there's confusion, they can start at the beginning?
Uh if we say appellate, then I think they gotta go appellate.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gotta be one or the other, I think. I don't think they basically go back and do it a different way than they.
No, Rich.
I'm just trying to think if, if they start off with an appellate hearing and then there's confusion, people don't get what's going on, what do they do?
It doesn't mean you can't accept discussion on the project, but
Okay, alright.
It's just one where you're not really, you're, you're kind of reviewing the decision and whether it was correct or not.
Okay.
Not bringing new information or anything like that. I think under de novo, you can bring new information that wasn't there before. You're just, in appellate, you're just reviewing what's happened.
So in the case of a denial, then we adopt this language to, how do we, how does the planning board, or what determina- determination has been made so that the appeals board knows this may be de novo or?
Uh it's just a disprovision here. Uh you know, we may, we may send something along, uh that could send something to make it clear the ordinance says is appellate hearing or de novo hearing. But changing the language here doesn't cause us to change anything that we're already doing.
Okay, sorry. Why are we deciding in the way the appeals board hears something?
Well, we would, I guess I would say because we're providing an administrative, uh, I mean, you know, if we had all the time in the world, maybe we wanna talk to the Board of Appeals. Uh but I guess we're just providing, uh it's our recommendation that we put it this way. But there, there isn't anything that I don't think would prevent the Board of Appeals from coming to us and saying, no, we want it the other way.
I was, I was gonna, I was kind of wondering if we're having, isn't Dick born the chair of the Board of Appeals?
Yes, I think so.
So if we're inviting him anyway, why don't we discuss this with him? Because.
He's not the chair.
Oh, he's not the chair? Oh, he's the, remember, well, he's probably the most knowledgeable member. Um the uh, just given how many years he's been involved, um you know, planning board chair and all that. The um, that might be an, an alternative. Uh I mean, we, we are the, sort of the keepers of the ordinance, uh and they are not. But um the um, but I, I, I think it would be good form to get their input.
Yeah, if he's coming anyway, it makes perfect sense to discuss with him. He might change our mind or whatever our hopes are.
Yeah, good point.
I mean, cuz, I mean, one of the problems Belgrade's faced is just incredible turnover on the Board of Appeals. That makes it a really difficult situation, uh not just for the Board of Appeals, but for the applicants going there hoping to get a fair hearing.
Well, a fair hearing to me would be being able to present the, the whole thing, not taking an appellate saying, well, this is what we said, approve or deny it. You know, if they're going to refuse, they have the right to say what they want. You know, they should have the right to go back as far as they want.
And, and also when a.
Present, you know, new material if that's the case.
Also, when you go to appeals board now, you know, the uh, the applicant, you know, you need to consider bringing, bringing an attorney. That's, it's a higher level of uh proof on the part of the uh, the applicant, and they have to prove uh beyond, you know, where the proof, burden of proof is upon the uh, the applicant, much more so than at the uh, uh planning board level. And so they're gonna, really should bring in an attorney, so.
I would just.
I, I wouldn't get, and, and I was about to mention that, and then also, again, I have a tendency to stay with the state or uh Model Act again, is to keep it the same with the other towns that were in our watershed. And I'd rather not deviate from what's the other towns are doing. I don't, I wanna us be the outlier type town within the watershed. We got something a little bit different with the rest of the towns.
So with chapter one thousand, it's going for the appellate?
Yeah.
For, well, appellate for planning board, but de novo if it was a code enforcement officer permit.
Right, right. Keep, keep the language where it is.
Right.
In, in the, in the Model Act.
So, so Craig, in those cases then, if the CEO denies something, it wouldn't be what we did, right?
The CEO wouldn't deny anything in the shoreline zone because we have to, aren't we?
Oh, there were some things where, you know, in, in the table there, CEO does have, has authority only. You know, example, oh, land use on page page thirty-three.
On our ordinance?
Yeah, just, just take the example, page thirty-three. I think I pulled up the one here. Okay, in table one, land use is in the shoreline zone. And if you just go over to number, item number twenty-three is the top, talks about individual private campsites. And, and you go way over to the right there, it says general, GD, general development. And LC, limited commercial. Uh the code enforcement officer has the sole authority over that. We can make a decision. So I'm just saying, uh that could be a situation where, you know, the code enforcement officer makes a decision, gets involved in a decision, only planning board doesn't because it's in LC or GD. So that goes, gets appealed, you know, by the applicant. We never saw it. Goes into the uh planning board, even the appeals board rather, you know, so then this, we'd kick it that way, you know, I'm saying?
Very limited. Filling or moving of ten cubic yards, just not even a dump truck load. Similar uses. So he's got very limited, very limited in that, in the shoreline zone.
One of the things that's different uh with comparing the state guidelines in our own ordinance set is a very significant difference in terms of what kind of applications we receive uh on a daily basis versus what the guidelines would require. Is that we require a planning board permit for any residential or, you know, any project essentially that's on a non-conforming lot. And uh most of those on the state guidelines are issued by the planning board, I mean, by the code officer. Under the state guidelines, we would see about one-third of our applications uh under the state guidelines as we would under our own ordinance. Because anything that's a non-conforming lot comes directly to us. Non-conforming setback comes directly to a structure that's, you know, expansion of a non-conforming structure. Most ordinances in the state guidelines would say that Gary would issue that permit, so. So we're more restrictive in that sense. That's why we see some of the shoreline, or the shoreline applications.
We don't have to make a decision tonight. I, I, I would think it would, might be helpful, at least me, to hear what somebody that's on the appeals board, somebody particular, yeah, I mean, you know, that, whenever that happens.
Yeah, agreed. So we should probably invite Mr. Bourne, is there a couple of talks he can talk about?
We could invite whoever the Chair is. I don't know who the Chair is. Mike Cano?
He's got the same bug where I have right now.
Oh, he does?
So, yeah, I would suggest that we keep in mind, like, like, the table response, you know?
I think.
So, yeah. But that's another thing that we should, yeah, we'd grasp on. Otherwise, I think the remainder of the shoreline zone work is we made a lot of progress.
Yeah, well, and it, it wouldn't, if we, if, after that, we decide um, to go with chapter one thousand, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be difficult to do. Cause we don't have to invent anything. The language is right there.
Alright, so we talked about the item that Rich wanted to bring up, and George and I have another thing.
Yeah, it's mostly to pick up the ordinance and with respect to the timber harvesting standards. So just, this all happened before I came to the board, uh, I don't know what year, maybe two thousand eleven, I'm not quite sure, but so we had, on page two of the existing, our current ordinance, we have this repeal of the municipal timber harvesting regulations.
What, what page you want to get, I'm sorry?
Two, two.
Page two.
And back in the standards of the ordinance, there's a multiple pages of timber harvesting standards that mean nothing in Belgrade. They're just taking up space. So what I thought would make sense is to eliminate them.
That's what we would do. I think that, that's what other towns would just, you might have a note say timber har- somewhere, timber harvesting is regulated per the main department of whatever.
Right, yeah.
We don't want any standards in our ordinance because we don't regulate.
I mean, maybe it's not confusing to, um, loggers, but I could see somebody that maybe didn't know the history spending a lot of time focusing on these standards that mean zero.
What's, what's the model act?
What's that?
What's the model, how's the model act?
It's got about twenty pages of timber harvesting standards.
Is the model act? It's a huge section.
Okay.
And it would be very burdensome for this town to take that out.
Right, and we talked about this before, didn't we?
Oh, well, we, we have, we have talked about-
Six months ago. Yeah, we were kind of going along with, take it out of the shoreline zone.
Well, that was a, that was an amendment made, I think, maybe two thousand eleven, maybe? Uh, I can't really tell from the way this is crafted, but um, the, uh, but what was done then was, and this was before I was on the board, was there was a second, this repeal section put in, but the standards were never eliminated.
And that was because the repeal only took place when a threat, certain threshold number of towns in the state also repealed. So we had to leave it in there until that happened. It did happen, but now-
Okay, so now we can do it, but then we couldn't.
Right.
Like, that's true, that, that's exactly what happened.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that's a great idea to help clean this up. If we're not gonna have it in there, then let's not confuse that. Have an appropriate note in here about, you know, timber harvesting regulations scandalized by some other fire and harvest.
Yeah, no, yeah, I mean, we would reference some to the Department of Conservation.
Yeah.
Well, that's not their name now either, but to the Euro Forestry.
So timber harvesting was page fifty-two though, the top says fifty-nine.
Seven pages thinner.
Yelps.
Paper Saving Act.
Timber saving.
And we don't have the letters on it anymore.
No, we don't.
No.
Let the professionals do it.
That was too easy, George.
You look dubious.
Can we make it thinner?
Is there anything else?
It's always, it's always nice to have a thing.
Is there anything else we wanted to talk about tonight, or shoreline zoning?
The only thing I would say is, as we go through and incorporate the changes that we made, there are numerous insignificant, well, I don't want to say insignificant, but uh-
In material.
Changes that are in the guidelines, things such as, it's no longer the Department of Conservation, it's now the Department of blah, blah, blah.
Right.
We'll make those changes and you'll see what those changes are, but I don't think we want to discuss every little change like that.
Right.
Except to review it when the draft comes out to see this and, but uh, seems like those changes would be made as we go along. Even though we didn't discuss them, they're obvious changes. They're just be consistent with. I'd say generally we want to try to make this with minor issues, consistent with the state guidelines.
Agreed. And so, and that's a good point for us as we go through. So I also want to make sure we keep in mind timelines, you know, working backwards from November, we're gonna have this ready for voters. We have to make sure that at some point, we look at the month preceding that, so that we're final draft, um, have our public information hearing, have a public informational meeting, public hearings, as you pointed out before, we need the hearing, it's all done, right? And then you ready to print, so you can go to the votes. So if you, help us stay on track, we need that.
Yeah, it'd be good to know what our sort of drop deadline, deadline is.
So, so I was thinking, basically, I'm just gonna toss out the informational, um, for meeting, a public informational meeting, probably in June.
As soon as we have the first draft that meets with our, with the board's overall acceptance.
Exactly. And that's the really critical factor, but I just kinda want to put out, we have to think about this because if it slips, then we get into, before you know it, it's gonna be September. We don't want to be late, so. So thinking about that, do we need to, uh, do we want to invite, um, Mike and Dick to our meeting in, second meeting in May?
Or on that topic of second meetings, here I want to ask you guys, do you still want to have the second meeting on early Monday, shoreline? So we're still, we'll have to step forward and pile over until we-
At least for next one.
At least for next one.
My opinion, say, is Roger, is that for next one, I still think we need to-
Just shoreline.
Yeah, I mean, we can reassess then, but I'm get, you know, I, we're gonna, I don't see how we cannot.
So, we just do what we can.
The only thing left is after we talked to the appeals board, that, um, I should get.
I, I want to think so. There are always surprises. Or could be surprises. I just want to be open to, to giving ourselves sufficient time to handle those things instead of meeting the timeline.
So, on the next shoreline zoning meeting, what are we gonna be doing? We're gonna start putting the words, putting our stuff together, right? The wording, the new wording ordinance? Is that basically what we're gonna start?
What I would see is, if, Nick, do you have a copy of the current ordinance that could be forwarded and worded to George? But my thinking is, go through, so that we're not wordsmithing here. George and I can put what we think the planning board decided on. Make those changes in a strikeout underlying format, have that available to the planning board uh, to one either read at home or, uh, we could go page by, uh, page by page. What I don't want to do is get to the point where we go page by page of every little change and find out it's taken us six more months to get through it, but, uh, I don't think we want to do the crafting right here. I, my thinking is it's more efficient that George and I can craft the language of what we thought the planning board did, provide that to you, and then you tell us, no, that's not what we thought. Or let's discuss this part of it perhaps and make it right or whatever.
Or should we have just a summary before you guys do that, of all the things that we, we decided over the last, over the last six months or whatever?
Yeah, I was kinda hoping to get Nick's minutes, uh, whatever. I don't have all the minutes of the meeting, but, uh,
Well, I've kept notes of the big, of the big things we've decided by vote. Um, but, um, and, you know, some of them are things where we already have wording that we tweaked. And so it's a matter of, you know, inserting that, uh, like with the stormwater, for example, management standard, um.
But you're, you're right on the issue of things like what we did for what you can do within twenty-five feet of water. We came up with a concept, but we don't have draft language at this point.
Don't have draft language, but, I mean, it, it, you could do it either way. It's just a question of what's the more efficient way to do it, I guess.
Yeah, I think we would be in trouble if we had to write everything that we talked about in here at meeting.
Right.
We would never get done by November, or the November after that.
So, so, Rich, you talked about you and maybe George doing this, uh, doing the part about keeping electronic version of it and then editing it based on collected notes and mindset and minutes and stuff to-
And then checking with the full board.
Yes. So, I want to, is that, do you, do you-
Yeah, and I'm, I'm perfectly willing to be the typist, the, uh, uh, my only limitation in terms of timing, that's why I was so interested in the, is I'm gonna be gone for two weeks in May for my son's wedding, so. Um, I'm not gonna, I'm not bringing my laptop to Costa Rica. And I'm not drinking beers with you on the beach.
You can't keep up, we didn't realize.
I'm sorry, Roger. Maybe another time, but not this time.
So, what do you need for us to proceed?
Electronic version, the new word.
And, um, what's the schedule in May?
What's the calendar? Uh, calendar, so May third is the first meeting, seventeenth is the-
May thirteenth.
May seventeenth is our second one.
Okay. So, are you gone on the seventeenth?
Uh-
Of May?
Yeah, uh, no, I'm not. I'm, I'm gonna be gone, uh, right after that, that weekend.
So would it be acceptable to have something ready for the seventeenth of May? Which is our second meeting in May, which would be the shoreline zone discussion, normal, right?
One thing we could certainly have.
So, have something, I don't know if we'd have-
Yeah, well, halfway through or something like, something that the board can review.
Is that, is that something?
Yeah, I, um-
George will come over and help.
I'm also not working on this in, uh, when we're in Moosehead.
Your laptop won't work up there, huh?
But, um, yeah, I, let, let's see how much we can get done.
Something, whatever it is, even if it's, you know, still, even if it's just ninety-five percent.
Well, I, I think, you know, what my suggestion would be, would be to work on those bigger pieces that we have already decided.
I like that.
Um, and, and then, um, and then, cause that, that, you know, that's the heavy lifting right there, and then, 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 um, you know, maybe while I'm gone, Rich could spend time, you know, marking up a paper copy for me to work off of later, when I get back.
I'm good with that. You good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
You know, normal edits and-
I'll just have to get back in the swing of actually doing something at night instead of watching the Red Sox.
Yeah, I know.
It's, they're hot, I guess.
Yeah, I know.
So, do, do we want to invite Dick and Mike to the second meeting in May? So, we have to allow ourselves time for that discussion with them and revision, hopefully review with, and we made your chance. You good with that?
Yeah, I, I, and, you know, so that's a productive meeting. I, I mean, they need to know that we want to discuss the, um, appeal section and whether or not to change it from de novo to appellate.
So Nick, when you invite Mike to take us to the board, board's chair, that back information is key.
It may not be a bad idea to try to get to them a copy of the DEP appeal section uh, under chapter one thousand, just so they can see what it says now before they get here.
Okay.
For, for the, all the board members', uh, info, um, if you're interested, um, there's a two or three pages about the difference, uh, and some of the law, uh, law, uh, law court decisions regarding de novo versus appellate in the MMA planning board manual.
Excellent, thank you. We all have copies of that, right?
Yeah, we're next drop, it's like-
You keep yours in the bathroom, don't you?
I never want to tell that.
Whenever, whenever I have a chance, I'll. Have you guys done now?
Okay, we're almost done.
Almost done.
So, second meeting in May is that stuff, first meeting in May will have some, it's what happened in the seventh one. Um, can, do you have questions for us?
Yeah.
Is that question? Is it gonna take long? It's nine fifteen.
No.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, so I came to a bunch of the meetings in the fall and summer because I was trying to sell my house in Waterville, and in the middle of winter, my house sold, and, uh-
Congratulations.
Thanks. Now I'm homeless because of my, my little camp in Belgrade, uh, it's not, it's not, I can't winter in it, so. So I had to make some changes to it and, uh, so I'm kinda under the gun, so I keep coming back to see how far we got on this and I was hoping that we'd still have the building season, uh, ahead of us, but November. So if it, if it, if it went to a public meeting and passed in November, um, how soon after that would, would we be able to put in building permits? Uh, would it be pretty much immediate, or?
Uh, we could put in buil- building permit at any time.
But using the new, using the new rule.
Right, you mean, the new one, it would be following, uh, we're assuming it's approved in November, it would be, um, based on that one in eight, which I can't remember what it is, November fourth, you said?
Seventh?
The seventh, whatever the, that two days in November.
Start first.
That would be the-
First week in November.
So it could almost be immediate that, that we could use the new rule?
Based on my understanding, that would be the timeframe, that's what you wish to do, to be the tailor your submission and application following the approval of what we said from the-
Rich, um, the, the process after the town vote, assuming town voters approve it.
Yeah.
Then it has to go to the commissioner of DEP for their approval.
Right.
It's only effective after that approval?
Right, I think they have, it's funny, I, after these are years, I can't even remember. It's either thirty days or forty-five days or something to either review and approve the town amendments or they become approved automatically.
Okay, so if we go with that then, then take into account the time needed for the DEP commissioner to do the approval, say it's forty-five days.
But it could be one to forty-five days. He might, he might be able to do it quick or not.
Yeah, but we don't know, just, just err on the side of caution, say it's forty-five. And then we're in the mid-December, just, just for, say December fifteen.
So, yeah, so it's not, it's not gonna be the day after the election, uh, it's gonna be sometime thereafter between then and the first of the year. So, yeah, so it's not, it's not gonna be the day after the election, uh, it's gonna be sometime thereafter, between then and the first of the year.
Now, the, can the planning board approve, uh, pre-approve a plan, you know, based on the passage of this and, and the approval by the commissioner, or does it have to come back again? Or is it, or can it be pre-approved and then rubber stamped later because you've already reviewed it, or? I'm just wondering how to get a house winterized by next winter. So what I've had to do this, the balance of this winter was drive to our camp in Shugalov. So, it's been an hour and a half drive in the morning and an hour and a half drive in the evening, I'm getting sick of that, so. So I gotta get, you know, I can get into this house for the summer, but next winter is gonna be an issue, so, um.
I don't know, pre-approve.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing we could do is approve something that meets the standards of the current existing sta- uh, ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, you're familiar. If the, uh, if it changes the ordinance, if the state moves it. What, what, in particular, that's, that's what I'm thinking, is there anything on the application we have to change if, if that changes? Cause we went through that one application, remember, we used the old one versus the new one?
Cause there's two lines, one that says volume, one says footprint, you can like that everything. We don't take a look at that, so, yeah, it'd be smart, but.
That's the main, that's the main thing that's changing is the volume, footprint.
Part of adding volume.
Yeah.
You have an adding volume, and we're not adopting the, or we're not proposing to adopt the, or thirty percent, whichever is larger. We're going by the, the.
Square footage.
Square footage.
Maximum square footage, so that's one other question I had, so, so if you're in the twenty-five to seventy-five foot zone and you're smaller than a thousand square feet, you can go up to a thousand square feet.
Correct.
And you don't have to worry about the thirty percent though, it's mostly for people who already have a thousand square feet and wanted to add another thirty percent.
Correct, that's what, that's what we will be proposing.
Okay, and, um, any section of the house that's closer than twenty-five feet can't be expanded, or? It still counts to the, towards the total footprint though, right?
Right. And we've got, we've got some provision, what did we say, uh, about the twenty-five?
As long as it could, it could be expanded, but as long as being expanded away from the water. Not out the sides, not out the back.
Not parallel to the water? Okay.
And if you were able to get back seventy-five feet, then you could add another five hundred square feet onto it because you're more than seventy-five feet, that's where you get up, up to fifteen hundred square feet.
Now, what about a slab or a foundation, if, and you're able to put that in? At what zone can you put in a, a slab or a frost wall?
You could do it, we may require you to move it back based on whether it's practical to move it back before you put your slab or a frost wall or what have you.
And then that becomes a site-specific decision.
Look at septic systems, trees, rocks.
Is the slab or the frost wall, does that have to go back to the greatest practical ex- extension?
It would, uh, again, it's practical, there's numerous things that might limit it, slope of the land, big rocks.
The other thing I just found out in, in the past ten years since I bought it, is the new FEMA floodplain maps. And I found out that I'm now in a flood zone, so. So I don't know, that, that invites new insurance, flood insurance.
Right, but there's a way to.
How you get out of that, to make sure you're, the, you know, you gotta get yourself above the floodplain.
Above the level.
Yeah, you can bring some fill-in, right, to do that, but then the question is, can you bring it in where you're at, I don't know.
I think you can only bring six inches of fill per, a year, so.
I, I can't spare that, probably all of it, right, I can't spare that, the, um.
It's also a process to question the mapping because there's been a chronic errors.
Correct.
For some reason, I, I don't know that, all the details.
So I, I have to like appeal to FEMA, perhaps, or?
Correct. And, and because there, like George just said, there's been several instances where people said, I wasn't in the floodplain before, but now I am, why is that? Then they appeal, but I can't sort of, what the steps are in the process, you go through it and you can say, oh, you know, I met this donation that should not be.
I get it in my junk email, once a month, an email from a surveying company that, you know, sounds like that's their niche now, is to, you know, pick up your cause with FEMA.
What's her name?
It's in my junk mail, like I said.
I'll take that from you, um, so, but that really just affects insurance rates, and we haven't looked into how expensive flood insurance is yet.
Right, but I can't say that, I've known several people, my parents included, who went through this process because they were like, why do we have to not pay flood insurance, we worked in the floodplain before.
Yeah.
But the natural they were after, after, uh, FEMA came out the new ones. So there is a way, if that's any of what was, any consolation to you, there is a way to do that, possible.
You think with LIDAR and stuff like that, that mapping would've gotten better, huh?
Right. Does that help?
Yeah, my, so, my only thought would be, is, like, if dormers are gonna be allowed, so we don't, we can't say for sure that it's gonna get approved, but I mean, all the other area towns have approved it, approved it, so I hope that means a good thing, but, um, is, is maybe I could increase the height of my structure, staying within the, the height limits, um.
I mean, the beauty of getting rid of the volume is it opens the door for doing things like dormers.
Yeah, and, and, uh, and then not put the second floor in because I haven't been approved for it.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But have the height there with maybe like rafters or something with no floor, so, and then, and then, and then re-approve or, you know, put in another permit to add the second floor, flooring, you know. So it's, it's, it's tricky, right, you know? Get some of the building done during the building season instead of in the middle of winter, next winter. Yeah, so, I have a lot of confusing topics to get through.
Yeah.
So you don't have, uh, anybody that owes you a big favor, huh?
I mean, I got friends with places, you know, that, that put us up at their places, but, um, it'd be nice to be in our own place, but we have some friends who have like stayed at different places while they went through the same process, you know? Temporary holdup, building permits and such, but.
So you can basically do that, so you can apply for a permit now, just, um, just, you know, do the second floor and, uh.
It'll be all cathedral ceiling, the whole place will be cathedral ceiling.
And then, modify once the new ordinance is there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, technically.
Would be just a change, I mean, it would be a second permit.
Yeah.
Cause it's, it's really the bedrooms and floor space, yeah, like if there's an upstairs bathroom, that's, so, you know, holdup.
But you took.
Exactly.
Plumbing is difficult too.
But remember, it keeps on coming back to the footprint, so if you're gonna expand the footprint, you're expanding the footprint.
Right, apply for the expansion of the footprint, make it taller, cathedral, have stacks available for plumbing tie-ons.
Cause the heights haven't changed.
No change there.
Right, same heights, yeah, okay.
So does that help? I mean, I know it's, it's not a perfect solution for the timing that you're talking about, but we are, we are trying very hard to get this to the voters in, you know, that's, that is, we're really trying to do that.
Do you think if you're on post, it makes a difference with the FEMA floodplain thing? Can you get up above the floodwaters, does that change anything?
I don't know.
I don't know if it gets you out, or it just makes a difference on your rates.
Cause I, I think that, me, I'm thinking, if you can show that your lot should not be in, that, that would be the first thing to do.
I think, if your lot's not in, then you get a letter of map amendment from FEMA.
Yeah.
You're in the floodplain too with me, buddy.
Yeah, I'll have to help you out.
The whole Snug Harbor is in the floodplain.
Um, Snug Harbor?
Snug Harbor, yeah, no, Cooks, Cooks Beach, Snug Harbor.
Oh, Co- Cooks Beach, yeah, well, I, I got exempted out.
So you got what?
I, I got exempted out, on the map.
Yeah.
You gotta go through the process.
Yeah.
And then you don't need the flood insurance, right?
Exactly, you're out of it.
I'm out of it.
Right.
You're out of it?
Yeah.
You got yourself out?
I did that way back.
So you went through the whole appeals part, didn't it just happen in like two thousand eleven?
Yeah, like, yeah, and then I had to go recheck it, you know, and I am out of it. So I can, I can tell you the process.
All right, well, if you're out of it, then I can get out.
Does that require you getting hired as a surveyor?
Oh, yeah, and you gotta, you gotta, you know, do someone.
Okay, I'll talk to you about that, and, uh.
I, you know, don't let that really call you out, I mean, it's, 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 it's a cost, but then again, it's not gonna stop you from.
Yeah, I didn't know, I didn't know how expensive it, you know, is it five thousand dollars a year, or is it five hundred dollars a year, I don't know.
Oh, for the insurance?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know, you know.
It's cheaper if you don't leave it.
Yeah, it is cheaper, but you know, it's, it's, it's not prohibitive, I mean, it's more like some of the horror stories you hear down on the ocean, so, cost-wise, so.
So there's some stuff that you'll probably have to do with that, but you understand where we're coming from on trying to deliver this to the voters, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Sounds like you made a ton of progress and ready to draft it, so that's good.
We are, we are right there, cause we've had long late nights. So, anyway, let's, let's wrap this up, guys, um, any, do you have any other questions for us?
No, I mean, I was gonna, I was gonna ask about that alternative fifty-foot, is that gonna maintain the alternative rule for the non-conforming lots, where you can move back to fifty feet and plant trees in front? You remember that one?
Is that the alternative expansion?
Yeah.
Is that still in the DEP guidelines?
I can't remember.
I might consider that one too.
Okay.
But it is number. It is, uh, well, it's number C, so, uh, page nine, page nine, number C, the conditional additional expansion allowance. And, uh, basically that says if you, if you, at fifty feet, you're allowed to have fifteen hundred instead of going all the way to seventy-five if you plant a series of trees in your front yard. So it encourages vegetation, same, I don't know how often people take advantage of that one, but.
That provision was eliminated from the guidelines, it's on page seventy-five, now it's, so.
So, so it might not make it into the new rule?
Correct.
Had you, had that come up in discussion yet?
Uh, we actually didn't discuss that at all.
Right, I don't remember discussing that at all.
What, what pages is it on the existing?
Page nine.
Nine?
Allows for extra expansion, if you're willing to do stuff.
You're willing to do some vegetation in existing well distributed.
To see that you're.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I remember reading, and I think it's about every ten feet, you have to plant a tree.
Maybe, maybe like we can, we have.
Might help prevent erosive waters from. I don't know how often people take advantage of it.
I can't remember anybody asking.
Is that right?
It doesn't mean that someone wouldn't want to, but I just don't remember anybody.
No, not since I've been here has anybody ever asked for it. I think it, like I said, it's been eliminated in the new chapter one thousand, but I think that was eliminated when they came up with this new, um, the square footage or thirty percent, whichever is greater. And I think when that happened, they decided, well, we won't keep that anymore because we got this other provision. We haven't kept the thirty percent, I mean, we didn't go with the extra thirty percent. I'm not sure what the DEP would say if we chose to say, we're not going with that extra thirty percent, but we wanna keep what we've got here, we'd have to check with them on that, uh, but it's worth, maybe, um, when Dick born, not with him so much, but it may be worth a discussion of our board. Cause we have to talk about, I just assumed that we were eliminating it because it was eliminated from the guidelines, but we can talk about it.
That's an excellent point, right? All right, let's make some more progress, um, Gary's not here for any update, but I do have a question, um, I'll just tell him stuff. When are they gonna start the road?
You keep all that stuff.
They started coming through this week.
I wanted to let you know when it's over.
On our driveway.
Couple of movements.
Cause they're gonna start doing major work.
In the village.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Day, day time.
Trees and removal of the power lines.
Trees and lines, okay.
And then finish in June, uh, be finished by June.
The dead stuff, wait till fall, fall, okay.
I didn't appreciate until the other day when I drove to Waterville, first off, I'm not going to Waterville anymore, but that aside, um, the, uh, there are a lot of houses along eight eleven there that, they're gonna have that road right, right in their frigging, you know, right in their faces, you know?
Have the what?
Have the road right in their face, I mean, they're gonna, the trees are gonna be gone, and they're gonna lose some of their front yards.
Yeah, I worked at him in lumber, he's pretty close already.
Real, on, on the lake side going out, uh, you can see where they got the state, which is a dish line, and look at the trees of the ribbon.
Yeah.
That's how far back they're clearing the trees.
Right, that's what struck me.
Some, some houses are gonna lose all of them up.
Yeah, exactly.
Hays, that's gonna lose, right, basically to their, uh.
Stone wall, yeah, at least they're back far enough though.
Yeah.
To have a little bit of space, but still, yeah, you're right, I, yeah.
It's impressive, yeah, so.
I saw clearing the trees down the village now too, you probably know the set for sure.
Well, today I was speculating, the whole day doing office work and writing the contract, and so I didn't even leave my house until three thirty, and I got up to the end of the hall, feeling a little, I'm like. You guys made some progress today.
It's the lake, is this color? All right, um, all right, I don't have any, any other pace, do they have, have anything? No, it's color in the lake, so we're not getting out of the night, thank you guys.